Okay.
Are we good, Sam?
Go.
You're good.
Okay, so we're ready to go?
Yep.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up the, um, special meeting, uh, the Board of Lake County Board of Supervisors for, um, March 27th, 2020. Uh, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And as usual, we will, um, have a moment of silence. Are there any dedications today? I have one. Go ahead. Go forth, uh, this turn. Thank you, Eddie. Okay, um, Sam, if you would lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the public, for which it stands, one nation, with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
There is a delay, for sure.
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Sam. I'll do my best to not move too quickly on this. Um, it is, uh, well, I have got 3:05 exactly. Is there any public input? Item 4.1, public input for today's meeting?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, just a moment. Um, I have some that I'm gonna need to sort through a little bit because it's all in one, um, pile, um, but I want to give you the ones that, uh... Okay, so this one is specific to public input where we're at in the agenda now, 4.1. This comes to us from, um, an email address known as, I think the way it reads is mountainman99@mchisi.com. And the way that is spelled is M-T-N-man-99@mchisi.com. And the person's public input is condolences for the Nevada Highway Patrol Officer murdered this morning, the suspect in custody after manhunt. Um, and then they say note, "The Nevada Highway Patrol Sergeant Ben Jenkins was shot and killed after a motorist before, by a motorist just before 6:00 a.m. this morning, 3:27:20." Continuing, Mr. Chair, let's see. It appears the other public input we have received, and Johanna, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like everything, what else we have is specific to comments people would like shared when you take up your other agenda items. Is that right?
Those are the ones I have, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So that's it for opening public comment, yes?
So as we move along, then, Carol, I will just ask for public input after each item. I want to welcome everybody who is, uh, here in our first virtual meeting all over Lake County and appreciate your patience as we move through this first one. So I just want to get that out there also. Um, if that is it for public input, we will go ahead and move right along with, um, item 5.1, consideration of ad hoc committee recommendations for the definition of nonessential workers during the COVID-19 shelter in place or the SIP order.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Bruno, you want to start that conversation, or Carol?
Yeah, I'm happy to introduce it, or, um, if you or Supervisor Sabatier would like to, that's fine, too.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and introduce it then.
Does Supervisor Sabatier have audio? Just want to check with him. Do you have audio, Supervisor Sabatier? I'm guessing he does not have audio. He's not acknowledging, so...
All right.
Okay.
Hello?
Sabatier, can you hear us? Check.
Okay, I think we're hearing Supervisor Sabatier now. Can you hear me, Supervisor Sabatier?
No, I don't think he's on. I don't, something wrong going on with audio. So I'll go ahead and introduce the item. Uh, the ad hoc committee was formed last week in an effort to, uh, work with department heads, uh, throughout the county to, uh, really define essential and nonessential workers. Um, ultimately, every worker's essential in the county, um, that we have working for us, but this is a time period with COVID-19 that really, we really look to work towards protecting the safety of our workforce to move through things. Um, we had an immediate meeting afterwards, and we had multiple meetings or at least phone calls, uh, with department heads as we moved through this process. I'm glad that we were able to bring this back this, you know, today, sooner than we thought. And, um, Carol, if you want to expand on that, go ahead.
Thank you. And so I was just checking in with Supervisor Sabatier, um, to ask if he had audio. It looks like he may have dropped off and be calling back. Am I, do I, does that look right, Jake? Is he gone?
Yeah, he's, uh, he has joined again.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, the committee spent a lot of time together working on this this week. It's been a very short time since you met and, uh, and directed us to form. And, and as we came together and reviewed the direction you had given us and what our, what the task was before us, um, we put together a couple of very important goals that we thought should guide any decision-making around, uh, this topic. And the first goal was safety of county employees, and then, of course, compliance with the shelter in place order. As you remember, when Dr. Pace gave the COVID-19 update on Tuesday, he asked very specifically for your help and support, and all that could be done are, uh, to ensure maximum compliance with the shelter in place order. And then our second goal was for as many county employees as possible to be working productively from home. The committee established categories for our employees in terms of essential and nonessential, and those are included in your cover document. But for obvious reasons, the, the nonessential categories were where we focused our, uh, our effort because the essential ones are fairly clearly defined in the, in the guidance that accompanied the governor's order. The committee, as Chairman Simon stated, the committee struggled a little bit with the whole terminology for nonessential because certainly all county work is essential to meet the needs of the public. Uh, but this is an extraordinary time when we are in crisis, and so, uh, we're going to use that term "nonessential" for the time being because it pertains only to the, to the COVID-19 shelter in place order, and it has no correlation whatsoever to the tremendous value we place in our dedicated county workforce. So the committee found that because of the SIP order, the shelter in place order, the work of county staff must focus on duties that are truly critical, duties that cannot wait because they are essential to the county's continuity of operations, or duties that are critical infrastructure work as defined in those specific sectors to support disaster response efforts. And so we conferred, uh, well, many of the department heads, um, had sent their responses to us before we began meeting explaining, um, their determinations on who is essential and not essential, and then we had a number of follow-up discussions with, um, with many of them. And the department heads concurred with the, the committee that, for the most part, general office workers, uh, who are responsible to provide support work such as reception, clerical, and other internal or routine functions are not essential for the purposes of the disaster, and such workers should be sheltering in place. The committee also found that nonessential workers, when feasible to do so, should be allowed to work remotely, which, uh, they can now do through the policy that your board approved on Tuesday for, working remotely. And for those situations where it's simply not feasible to work remotely, perhaps the nature of the, the employee's job assignment doesn't, does not make, make that possible, um, those nonessential employees should be first offered work as disaster services workers, uh, from which they could be assigned by the Emergency Operations Center, um, or the final alternative, of course, is to shelter in place at home and, uh, wait for resumption of county duty, county offices. And so today, the committee is recommending first that, that your board direct department heads to immediately send workers they have determined to be nonessential to shelter in place during the disaster. The second recommended action of the committee is that your board authorize department heads to periodically adjust their determinations of nonessential workers due to the fluid nature of the disaster. It was really obvious to the committee that department heads are truly the best, uh, source for making those determinations. And that your board also direct department heads to provide remote work assignments to nonessential workers when feasible, uh, offer the disaster services work assignments, or approve such employees to use their accruals and other leave benefits while they are sheltering in place and not working. And finally, uh, the committee recommends your board direct the committee to continue to be available to meet with department heads as needed, to assist with resolution of issues that arise, and return to your board no later than April 14th with a status update.
Somebody's typing. Okay, um, that's definitely not me. I wouldn't type that fast. Yeah, um, so Jake, uh, how do we move forward with questions? I guess, Robert, did you have your hand up? Jake?
Uh, I haven't seen any hands up at this moment.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do have some, uh, public input that was sent to the public comment email address that is specific to this agenda item when you're ready.
Okay, go ahead, Carol.
But the board may want to comment first?
That's what I'm asking. Uh, that's what I was asking, if any other board members...
Oh, Rob's got his pen out.
Mo?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, this doesn't necessarily have, uh, you know, as much to do with this as, um, I was going to mention this earlier, we, um, there were a couple of comments made in the last board meeting that were, were completely taken out of context, but it just was a reminder to me and maybe to all of us, we need to be real careful about our choice of words. There was a, a comment about, you know, closure of, of a particular office, and we all got bombarded with calls from the Board of Realtors and, and everybody else. So I just, you know, nobody did anything wrong, but it was taken out of context, and we probably have to be a little bit extra, extra careful about, um, our choice of words on that, so...
Yeah, if I could, yeah, I agree with you, Rob. Obviously, uh, it is heightened awareness, and, uh, people's, uh, stress levels are a lot higher, so I concur and agree with you. Uh, I know I returned a lot of phone calls on that issue, too, so I agree. Uh, any other board members? Jake?
Do you have anything, Jake?
No, I don't have any comment at this time.
Okay, Mr. Chair, then I can share with you the comments received by email to this agenda item if you wish.
Jake, I just want clarification here, uh, question on this. You know, I, I don't see the other board members, so I don't know, um, you know, I want to make sure I'm not missing out on anything of any of the three board members that may want to say something. I don't know if you're gonna give me notification or, uh, or if you can see them on the screen.
Can you stretch, stretch your screen, Mo? Maybe make it bigger so you can see more people?
Hi, Kena.
Push the gallery button, maybe?
Yeah, you can't see the pictures of everyone else at the top of the screen, Supervisor?
No. No, I cannot.
Yeah, you have to hit the gallery button, Mo.
Oh, there we go. Okay, I've been asking about that one. Thank you very much. Time to see everybody.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, would you like me to share the email public comment?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay, so, um, this, this first one, uh, is from Stacy Horner at, it's stacyhorner@yahoo.com. And Stacy says, "Please don't forget about pool and spa workers. They have to be out sanitizing the pools and, and spas and ponds so we don't get mosquitoes, algae, and so on." The next public comment is from Susan Coffin. It's Susan Coffin at mediacombb.net. She says, "Hello, I am a notary and loan signing agent in Lake County. I'm strictly mobile, but..."
Carol?
Yes.
Carol, if I could excuse you, we go one by one, and I see Supervisor Brown, go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
I think, I think there's some confusion that we're, we're talking about county employees, correct?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think the public out there thinks that they're, because I did get some calls about this from people, and I explained to them that we're actually discussing just county employees, not, not employees throughout the county.
That is a good clarification, Supervisor Brown, and I did see some other email correspondence from HOAs and other things, and yes, we are directly speaking about, uh, county employees we have patrol over, and also, uh, for individual operations are out there, they should look at, uh, the governor's order and also the public health officer's order to determine what that is, and then work directly, uh, through those channels. Um, Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, sorry, I'm using a screwdriver, but, um, I got a couple of calls, too, uh, just to add to Rob, what Rob was saying. Um, and I actually had a good talk with, uh, Rich Ford yesterday about what they're doing in their office, and they are open, um, and they are conducting business, because I know that other folks were emailing, and I'm sure you guys got it, too, about this subject, but just kind of applying it to what Rob was talking about, misunderstandings earlier, and he has stated that there is, they are open, um, for business, and that, uh, he is working remotely, and a lot of other folks are as well. But, um, not to digress off of the subject, but just noting that so that, just to support what Rob was saying, and also have the dialogue about it.
Okay, Carol, go ahead and continue with input on item, um, 5.1.
Okay, Mr. Chair, all of the input that I have, um, was essentially, or at least, I guess one more just came in a moment ago, but, um, so I, the first two, I read one in, in its entirety, the next one from Susan Coffin, who I was reading, I was in the middle of reading, that also is about, uh, not county employees. Um, so do you wish me to, um, complete reading that one?
Nope.
Okay.
No, what we'd like to do, obviously, is stick to the agenda items that we have here, and hopefully, uh, some of the comments we've made as a board clarifies those issues, uh, hopefully, if people are watching, and we'll attempt to, uh, continue to do that, maybe, um, as we move forward on, maybe in some of the board insights or something, too.
Okay. So the next one is from Randy Murphy with the Hidden Valley Lake Association, and his comment also is about the employees of Hidden Valley Lake Association, and today's discussion is about county employees. Uh, the next one is from Charlene Wheeler of Wheeler's Landscaping, and hers also is about, uh, the employees in the landscaping industry, whereas this discussion is about the employees of the county. And, let's see. Then there are a couple of other questions that have just popped through. Someone by the name of Heath Barilly, so it's heathbarilly@gmail.com, is asking, "Are temporary extra help employees included in the plans during this shutdown? Many of them have worked for the county with no security." I'm, I'm not sure I understand the meaning of that question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, um, I'm not sure either, if any other board member thinks they understand that one. Um, maybe that's something, I know that's something we didn't talk about, is the ad hoc committee. Um, Bruno, do you have any thoughts?
Well, some of the departments...
Can you read it, can you read it again? Can you read it again, Carol?
Yeah, that, yes, but I, I just want to respond to, um, what Chairman Simon said, and then I'll read it again. Uh, many of the departments did give us their input on extra help employees and whether they are essential or not essential, so...
That's the 300 hours.
So this person is asking, "Are temporary extra help employees included in the plans during this shutdown?" I, I, I just am not sure what that means. "Many of them have worked for years for the county with no security."
So I think you answered your own question, yeah. Uh, each department head did address those, uh, right, part-time employees, so, I don't know.
And then the last one, um, just a second here. This one is from Elizabeth Larson with Lake Co News. And her, she says, "I have an initial question. How much of the county's workforce is expected to be under the nonessential definition? Do you have numbers or a percentage?" And, Mr. Chair, do you want me to address that question?
Uh, yes.
Uh, the answer's no, we don't have a total number. It, uh, varies by department and the nature of the work each department does, and we also expect it will, uh, be fluid and changing as we work through the disaster, depending on how long, uh, the, the shelter in place order is in effect.
Okay. Uh, any comments, uh, from the board?
Well, I, that's a good question about the, um, about the percentages, and maybe, maybe we can get an update on that on Tuesday?
Yeah, the ad hoc committee can definitely, uh, see if we can come up with anything.
Department heads could probably, you know, send that information to the ad hoc committee, and then we can find out that way, maybe. Thank you.
Okay, any other board members?
My only comment would be, I, I agree that, um, the recommendations of leaving it up to department heads is, is what we need to do, that's why we have them in those positions to make these decisions.
We're seeing some chat comments. Can people see that? The chat?
So, yeah, I'd like to be able to rely on that, but, you know, department heads are people, too, and they, you know, there's, there's, uh, strong feelings about, you know, helping their employees and all that. Sometimes that has to be set aside in order to, to do the thing that we're trying to accomplish here, so, um, I, I don't mind, of course, you want to have the department heads decide, but there may be some, some of those that we need to, um, step in and offer opinion as well, so, because I know at least one department head that, that has identified all of their employees as, uh, as essential, and they're not. I mean, they're just, they're not right now, so it's like, uh, there's, there's going to be some of that, I can tell you.
So the committee, the committee had a number of follow-up conversations with department heads, and I don't believe at this point there's any department that believes all positions are, are essential.
So Sam, we can hear you guys talking over there. Uh, you're gonna have to mute over there, Johanna. That's where the typing's coming from, too, probably. Carol, can you say that again?
Just a second. We have a concern. Can we just hold for a second?
Okay.
Okay.
Just hang on.
So it looks like we have this chat thing up on the side. Can we take that down? It looks like, um, Shannon's trying to talk more about, like, a public comment thing.
Okay, just hang on a second.
So Jake?
It's...
Yeah, I thought I heard, uh, that you guys wanted to see it.
Okay, sorry about that, supervisors. Somehow the chat, uh, thing had popped up. So for people that are offering comments by chat, please, uh, raise your hand electronically, and Jake will tell us to recognize you. And so I think, uh, the supervisors asked me to repeat what I just said, so, um, uh, the, when, so in reviewing all of the responses the department's heads had provided about what they believed was essential and nonessential, the, the committee, um, had follow-up meetings with a number of department heads to kind of talk some of those things through. And, and, um, after the conversation and after our two board members did a meritorious job of explaining the board's priority to get people home, sheltering in place, working to the greatest extent possible, there was quite a bit of change in what the department heads had originally recommended. And I don't believe there's any department at this point where all employees are, um, considered essential, except maybe the department who's got his hand raised right there, Sheriff Martin, but, uh, all...
I think there's a, I think there is one other one, too, that we did have some conversations with. I don't know if you meant raise your hand on the computer screen or actually raise your hand, but I did see Brian raise his hand immediately, so, uh, go ahead, Brian.
If it made it over on the TV, technically, that's electronically.
Yeah, I agree, man.
So, and I think I can unmute myself, I didn't want to be rude, um, but to answer the question posed, uh, as far as percentages, right now, I'm looking at 7% of my department is going to be deemed non-essential. With that 7%, there probably half of those are willing to go work at an alternate location. So it's, uh, for the sheriff's department, it's not going to be a mass exodus of employees. Um, that was just a response to the question that came up.
Thank you, Brian.
Did Supervisor Sabatier make it in? I know he was having some technical difficulties.
Yes, he is.
He hasn't commented on this yet, and, and, uh, he certainly played a vital role in the committee.
Supervisor Sabatier, go ahead and unmute yourself there, join in. Got it?
There we go.
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
Okay, um, I think that, uh, we had some really healthy, uh, conversations. Um, we definitely made the goals very apparent to every single, uh, uh, every single person, every single director of every department. Uh, we, we made sure that they were aware that our, our, again, our goal, just to repeat, was, uh, we, we want to try and make sure that everybody is safe, everybody is, uh... Hold on one second.
You're still good, Bruno? We still hear you.
Okay. So ba- basically, we, we made everybody be aware that our, our number one goal is we want everyone to be, um, e- everyone that needs to be home, needs to be home and, and work from home, we made it available to them with, whether they are able to work remotely or whether they're able to, uh, uh, wait for their computers to be available for them to take home, that's going to take some time. Uh, we, we, uh, also, there, there's a difference between, um, essential and nonessential. The, 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 essential is those that... Hold on one second. I'm really struggling, I'm very sorry for that.
If you need help with computer stuff, Bruno, I'm available. Yeah, yeah, and if you don't help, I'll be the next one to help with it. But we can still hear you, Bruno. Go ahead and keep going.
Basically... Those... I don't know why I'm struggling here. Give me a moment.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, man. Um, Supervisor Brown, did you have another comment? Were you raising, uh, okay? All right, when you're, okay. Well, uh, when you're ready to chime back in on this one, uh, go ahead, Bruno. Um, we'll, uh, continue, uh, trying to move forward here. Obviously, on item, uh, 5.1, um, you know, ultimately, we, we want to move forward. EJ, did we lose you? All right.
So...
So let's go ahead and bring this back to the board. I think we've, we had public comment on it, the issue, some conversation. Uh, is there any more, uh, comment from the board? Not, try and move forward with, um, some, some action. Jake, are there any, uh, public comments from here in?
Um, I, I don't, I don't, no, we don't have public comments.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add a final comment, um, this is Carol.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the reason that we have this on your board agenda in this special meeting on Friday afternoon is it that it is the hope of the committee that, that the board would take the recommended actions today, and that, in effect, that means, uh, today is the last day that, um, many of our office workers would remain in offices, and instead, they would be sheltering at home and, of course, working to the greatest extent possible. And those that can't work would be taking... And those that can't work would be taking, uh, some of the leaves that have been made available to them.
Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. We brought the actions, uh, suggestions. Um, is there, uh, any action to be taken by the board at this time? Was anyone willing to step up, make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Anita. Don't forget, this has to be by roll call vote, because you're all doing this. Tell it can be...
Excellent. Uh, will that be from Johanna or from, uh, Jake?
That'll be for me.
Okay, thank you, Johanna. So, someone needs to, uh, make a motion, if you would.
We do this all in one motion, or do we need to separate the four?
I think we're going to separate. Uh, Anita...
Your, your board can do it in one motion if you, if you like. You're just going to move to adopt the recommendations of staff in their memo.
Then move there. Is there a second?
If, if, if possible, I'd like to, uh, just finish before we, uh, fi- finalize this, uh, motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
So, I just want to say that, uh, we, we... This is not an easy thing, uh, to, to deal with. The circumstance, the, the situation i- is definitely, um, fluid. What we want to do is we want to make sure that everybody is home, that can be home, because of the fact that this is a situation where we are asking people to, um, we, we're asking, we're asking everybody around us, and, and, and granted, we, we are definitely looking at, um, our, our, um, our county, uh, as far as the staff that work with us, as far as all the departments, but we're also asking the, the, our constituents and our businesses to be home, and to try their best to shelter in place. And, and we're trying to mimic that ourselves. Uh, we're, we're trying to make sure that, uh, everyone is going to be safe, everyone is going to be healthy, that everyone is going to help us reduce the possibility that we are going to infect, uh, that, that, we, we, we want to reduce as much as possible what it is that we are doing, so that the coronavirus, when it does get here, if it does get here, if it is already here, that it, that it has the inability to impact us in, in the ways that it's impacting other people. However, we also need to make sure that we continue to work as much as possible. So, number one, we want people to be safe, we want people to be healthy. Number two, we want people to be able to work as much as possible, if that is possible. It's going to take some time. It's going to take some time for IT to be able to get their computers working, to get their laptops available, uh, and, and to be able to continue working. It is important for us, first and foremost, that people are safe. We, we care about our staff, we care about the people that work here at the county, and so we need to make sure that, that, first and foremost, that people remain safe. Number two, if it's possible, we want them to be able to continue to work and continue to function, because it is important for us, whether it's, uh, people at, um, at public health, whether it's people over at the assessor's office, whether it's people, um, um, at, uh, social services. We discussed this with every single department, that they have to have the ability to, number one, be safe, number two, be able to continue working. Um, I think that it's going to be difficult for the fact that it, some people are going to have to, uh, some people are needed to work, uh, right here, right now, and some others, it's going to take a little while before they're able to continue working. Uh, i- it's going to be a very, it's going to be, God, I'm really not doing this correctly. Um, it's going to be... It's going to be inconvenient, it's going to be difficult, it's going to be, we're, we're, we're... It, it's... I don't have the right words. Um, a lot of people came to us saying that everybody was essential, um, and I think that a lot of people, uh, were able to make those changes, and, and were able to say, okay, I understand that we're going to have to figure out how it is that we can work in a different capacity, so that we can go ahead and make this function in a very different way. Uh, certain departments, uh, for instance, I know that, uh, i- i- if I move over to the side, I can see here Brian Martin is, uh, watching us. Uh, certain departments, um, the majority of their, of their staff are, are, are definitely required to work right here, right now, and some of those are our Sheriff's Department. Uh, and, uh, like, for instance, public health also needs to, uh, function. Uh, what we want is, we want our support staff to be able to find ways to continue to work, but continue to work in a more safe and, 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 uh, safe environment, such as the remote, uh, work, uh, such as the work.
Okay. Uh, you know, I think...
You're breaking up a little bit. I can, Moke's kind of breaking up a little bit. I don't know if I can...
Yeah.
Yeah, so Bruno, I think, um, ultimately, I think your sentiment that you're trying to get across is, um, ultimately, comply with the health and safety orders that have come out, both from the governor's office, public health. Uh, we're moving in the direction, and it's definitely going to interrupt some of our employees', uh, regular routines and other things like that, but safety being number one, and then working with each department head, and I appreciate your help on this committee, and, um, I think we're moving in the direction. As you guys can tell, this is not an easy decision. Uh, when I started out this morning, saying every one of our employees at the county are essential, um, that we're moving in that direction, and this is going to be a moving target as we move through this. We're going to do it together, uh, and we're going to make sure, uh, that we try and protect life and safety first, and then go from there, and support all of our departments that will continue being on that are critical. Um, I want to thank you for the help on that, Bruno and Carol, and all of the department heads, and also the Board of Supervisors for recognizing the directional movement. So, um, I, I, I definitely, um, thank you, Bruno Sabatier, but go ahead and move on with, um, if we can get this motion completed, get this one out of the way, and then we can go on to number two.
We have to do by roll call?
Yes.
Yes, Johanna will call the roll if you're ready.
There was a beginning, there was a beginning motion from Supervisor Scott, but there wasn't a second. Is there a second?
A second.
Supervisor Brown.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yep.
And Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, moving along our, our agenda, uh, item 5.2, Consideration of Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 2020-32 of the County of Lake Forest Supervisors, relating to Workplace Safety, Employee Leave, and Remote Work-in Response to COVID-19, and B, Direction of Staff. So, go ahead, Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a simple correction to the Resolution Number 2020-30 your board approved on Tuesday. Uh, and the reason for this correction is that things are changing very quickly in our work on this disaster, and Section 3 in that resolution, uh, really no longer applies in light of the direction your board is taking to get as many county workers as possible sheltering in place. And, and it, it is our belief that having this Section 3 in the resolution also will confuse people, and make it sound as if, um, we are accommodating folks inside the county offices, when in fact, um, there will be very little, if any, of that happening, uh, now that most county employees will be sheltering at home. And so, the recommendation is to remove, uh, that Section 3 in the original resolution, and this amending resolution that you have attached here accomplishes that.
Okay. Carol, thank you very much. Uh, board members, any, uh, comments on item 5.2 and the clarification?
Uh, the only thing I have, I did get a, hold on a second, I should have pulled this up sooner, I apologize. I had a, a message from one of our employees who, who wanted clarification. I didn't have the clarification, so I told, told them that I would ask. Um, so, there, uh, there's some confusion about the 80 hours, they're wondering if this is something that will be fronted, and we have to pay back with accruals, or, or how that's going to work. And that, I mean, that's, it, it's, it's all part of this whole, um, this whole effort that we're combining together, but I thought maybe this would be a good, good as time as any to bring it up and maybe get clarification for them.
And so, are you talking, you're talking about the other sections of the resolution where the board, um, adopted the emergency paid sick leave?
Yeah.
No, the emergency paid sick leave?
It's not specifically in here.
The emergency paid sick leave is authorized by the federal government, the county's required to pay it. It's not a loan of sick leave, it does not have to be paid back by employees.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you for that clarification, Carol, yeah. Good question, Rob. All right, any more, uh, clarification or questions about, uh, the resolution from the board? Okay, uh, we'll go to, uh, public comment. Carol, do we have any public comment on this item?
I do have some public comments specific to item 5.2. Just a moment, Mr. Chair, let me pull it up. Um, okay, um, this first one is from Alyssa Gordon, who is a Water Resources Specialist at Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District. Uh, her email address is agordon@hblcSD.org, and her question...
You know...
Go ahead.
I, I did see that one too, and I think that's another question of, um, the Community Service District. You know, I think that's another one, you know, not, unless it's something different, Carol, I think that's more along the lines of them asking you for clarification about their employees, correct?
The, the question is, does the new federal law, the, I assume she's referring to the, um, uh, let's see, I don't see, it's the HR, I don't have it right in front of me, but... The Families First Coronavirus Act, um, if that pertains to public employees? And the answer is yes, well, government employees. It, it pertains to employers with 500 or less employees, and to government employers. So, uh, since she works for a community services water district, I assume she is working for a government entity.
Okay.
And I believe that is all the input I've received by email to 5.2. We may want to turn to Jake, or to any person that's in attendance, if they wish to speak.
Jake, do you have any public comment, or anyone who would like to speak on this issue? Can you say that again?
Uh, yeah, I don't have any public comment at this time.
Okay.
Is, is anybody else in the room wishing to speak, Jake, that you can tell?
We, we do have someone who has a comment to share, but I don't think it's relevant to this item.
I was advised that we may have someone wanting us to go back and reopen, uh, 4.1 for a comment. Is that what you're seeing, Jake?
Well, okay, so, first of all, I mean, this is Moke's call, but I, I appreciate that, Jake, but we, it would, it would really be up to us to determine whether or not it's relevant, and...
Okay.
I, I, I'm not, I don't mean that in a bad way, I appreciate your...
No, I think it is. Yeah. So, someone's asking to open up public input again?
I, I'm told that, uh, there may be someone wishing to speak to the status of homelessness and the COVID-19, uh, i- impact, and if that's the comment that Jake has, I would recommend your board complete the item you're discussing right now, and then go back and reopen 4.1?
That is correct.
Okay, that is the comment, Jake?
Yeah, I think that, that is, I will proceed. So, if we could, um, work on item, finishing up here, the resolution, offering a resolution, um, of item 5.2, um, you know, that's it, that is, since there is no other public comment on 5.2, go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
It's a resolution?
Yeah, just offer it, please.
Yeah, I'll offer, I'll offer the resolution.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay.
Roll call vote?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier? Supervisor Sabatier?
You may be having technical difficulties, maybe go to the next one, it'll get figured out here.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
You're on mute, Rob.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I, I said aye, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, Anita, can Supervisor Sabatier, uh, acknowledge...
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop off the meeting for a minute, I'm gonna call Bruno, I'm gonna check on him.
Okay.
Yeah, please, thank you, Rob. Uh, did you call Supervisor Scott already?
No. Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
So, can we finish, do we want to finish this vote, or just pause here for a moment? Because we're right in the middle of a vote.
I think we need to pause.
Okay, let's just pause. Then, uh, and so, do we want to take a break, Mr. Chair? Perhaps a break would be in order, where we go offline for a moment? Or Jake?
Uh, yeah, let's take, uh...
Jake, what are our options? Does everybody have to call back in?
Uh, you know, I don't know, how do we take a five-minute break?
Jake, how, can you do that? With, and keep everybody on the line, but have us on pause?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, so we'll be back in...
Do we gotta mute our...
Five minutes.
Do we gotta do it on our end?
No, I think you can just, yeah, you can mute it, but stay on, stay there.
You mute it, and then you press Stop Video, and then you come back and press Start Video.
Okay. Everyone, and, uh, everyone come back when you're ready, and unmute yourself.
7th, um, Board of Supervisors, Lake County, 2020, at, uh, 3:56. So, we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll bring it back to the board if we would like to open up item 4.1, Public Input. Uh, that is the case, and we'll make a motion, and go ahead and open that back up.
I don't see Bruno got a vote on that last one. Did he?
Uh, we just didn't get Bruno.
Thank, thank you very much, thank you, Tina. And so, uh, Bruno, we had four, uh, votes completed, and on item 5.2, and, um, go ahead, Johanna.
Okay, so Supervisor Sabatier, is that fine, or do I need to recall roll?
Good question, clarification?
I think you just, I think you just paused, didn't you, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
All right, then you can pick up the vote from where you left off.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Okay.
Hey, guys?
Yeah.
Hey, guys. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna leave for the moment. I'm, um, I'm low on sugar, I'm a mess.
Okay.
And, uh, I think I just need to go for the moment.
All right, take care of yourself.
All right. Bye.
Okay, so the vote's 5-0 on that?
Yes, vote is 5-0.
And then Supervisor Simon, the 4.1, um, the person that wanted to reopen that actually is not here anymore, because she had to go to another meeting. Um, if I could relay what she wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, Anita, do we need a motion to open this back up, or we just move back and open it?
You're going to have to do a motion to reopen, and you're going to have to do roll call vote.
Okay. So, uh, would any other...
Move to open, yeah, move to reopen.
Thank you, Supervisor Bruno. Thank you, Supervisor Scott.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, Shannon just wanted, um, us to be aware, and our county employees to be aware, that the Warming Center, starting Monday, will be in a 24/7 operation to help our, our neighbors that are experiencing homelessness, and that if there is any county employees that are, um, considered non-essential, and, um, they're looking for work, um, to reach out to her, um, or the Warming Center, actually, I have the number here, um, it is 533-0522, because they are looking, they're going to need some assistance, and they have funding to, to pay for, um, employees.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have anybody...
Mr. Chair, before you close this item again, I, the Behavioral Health Director has been listening to the meeting and said that he... has been listening to the meeting, and said that he may send me an email message regarding that issue that was just spoken to, and so if you would just leave it open for a moment, we may have another comment to add to that.
Okay, we're waiting to hear from Todd then?
Yes, he said he would email a comment. Anita, can the chair leave this item open and move on to 5.3, and then come back to this?
I guess you can.
Well, you know, I think for clarification, you know, on that, I don't know how much more clarification we need from that point of view, I think Tina, Supervisor Scott did a good job of relaying what the individual wanted to get across, and that was Pastor Shannon, I think, who sent that in?
Well, your board can go on to the next item and leave this one open and come back
to it, as long as then you go back and actually close it, so it doesn't...
The Behavioral Health Director's comment just came in, so if you...
Okay, go ahead, Carol.
So he wanted to add that they are hoping that the continuum of care COVID-19 funds, you remember, your board discussed that earlier this week, and the continuum of care was reportedly receiving $78,000, so Director Metcalf is saying the hope is that those funds will help keep the Warming Center open longer.
Okay, thank you very much for that updated information. From Bibi El, thank you. Okay, that concludes public input at this point, we will go ahead and move along with the agenda, item 5.3, our last item today for our special meeting, consideration of agreement between Health Services Department and appoint Dr. Charlie Evans to act as designated alternate health officer. And I think most of the information sent around to the board members, I think, I would like to start this item off as the chair of, this is going to be a disaster that is, right at this point, we don't have an end date to, when we deal with fires, floods, and everything which I'd say you will excellent at, at least dealing with those and coping with those, this is going to be a long-term battle, and I just would like to send out to all county employees, including ourselves, that this is probably just the beginning for next few weeks, so please be thinking about getting the rest, alternating when you can, and being prepared if you are the one that goes down with this coronavirus, that we have obviously a backup or other opportunities for ourselves here in the county. So, I want to thank everybody who's working hard on this, that's all essentially, everybody, every bit of staff in our emergency operations, folks, Mr. Brian Martin, the sheriff here, but also, I know board members, including Supervisor Brown, are working diligently and probably thinking about this all the time, but our own health and safety is very important, and make sure to get the rest where you can, so, sorry to set up your preaching about that stuff, but we know this is going to be a long one, so, thank you. Board, open it up, the rest of the board for comment? On this issue, I'm not on mute, am I?
No, I don't have anything to say, other than I agree with you, we're going to need to do a lot of rotation of a lot of people, you know, we have it easy, the five of us, you know, but we are here available if they need any of us, but everybody's working so hard, and you know, it's, you know, you can't use the analogy of the fires, because when the fires are there, everybody wants to come in and help us, right now, it's, you know, the whole country's in the same shape, so.
Thank you Supervisor Brown, any other board members? Go ahead Supervisor Crandall.
Actually, no, 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 it has nothing to do with this, sorry.
Okay, all right, this item, obviously, what you guys have, the information and the agreement, is to do just that, I know, is Denise on the, is there any comment, is Denise on the line, or on the meeting here, in the room, Jake?
Yes, she's here.
Excellent, all right, if there are no more questions for the board, we'll go ahead and open it up to, for Denise to address, public input?
Denise, are you there?
Denise, do you have a comment, I haven't muted you.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, thank you, so I just want to thank your board for getting this on the agenda, this is actually something I've been working on for the last few months with Dr. Evans, he is a very qualified, trained physician who has worked with Dr. Pace in prior areas of medicine, but we expedited it because, as you said, this is going to be a long haul, and if, I don't know if anyone knows, but the health officer in Marin actually came down with COVID-19, a member of their EOC, the larger counties have deputy health officers who can step in, we don't, and so it was important that we had a backup physician who could support Dr. Pace during what's going to probably be, you know, several weeks, if not several months, so, thank you.
Thank you very much Denise, any questions from board members? Carol, do we have any public comment, or Jake, on this issue?
I have not...
I think Brian had a suggestion. No, I'm just kidding.
I have not received any public comment via email, Jake, anything electronically in your hopper?
No, and I don't have any public comment on my side.
Okay, seeing that, we'll go ahead and post public comment, and bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve as presented.
Second?
Second. Well, you've got two items.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, consideration of agreement between Health Services Department and Dr. Charlie Evans.
Second.
All right, motion to second, go ahead Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall? Supervisor Brown?
I feel like I'm one of the Brady Bunch here, yes.
Okay, and then Supervisor Scott?
Hi.
Okay.
I just, and I'm sorry, I assumed that both of them were, you couldn't approve one without proving the other, so I moved to approve, or, yeah, to prove to appoint Dr. Charlie Evans to act as designated alternate health officer.
Second. All right, motion to second, go ahead Johanna.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And then Supervisor Scott?
Hi.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much, everybody for joining, both in the public and everywhere, we're going to go ahead, adjourn, yes.
Before you adjourn, we missed item B on 5.2, so if I could please ask you to reopen that one for just a moment?
Direction of staff, okay, all right, go back, we'll get a motion from the board. Move to reopen.
Okay.
All right, EJ, you second? Go ahead Johanna.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
So Mr. Chair, I want to apologize to your board for missing this the first time around, hopefully by next Tuesday, we'll all be pros on this digital way of doing business, but we neglected to have your board consider the recommendation that you direct all department heads to immediately cease business practices, which involve bringing the public into the Lake County Courthouse, unless they have made special arrangements, subject to the approval of the county administrative officer, and the purpose of this direction would be to ensure employee and workplace safety.
So moved.
Yeah.
Motion by Supervisor Scott, seconded by Supervisor Brown, please give the roll call Johanna.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chair, you still have to call for comment.
I apologize, yes, is there any public input on this item? Jake, or Carol?
I do not have any, Mr. Chair, via email.
I do not have any public comment either.
Okay, we'll bring it back to board for action, there is a motion and a second.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that, that covers our...
I would like to say, I know a lot of people out there watching, a lot of people are watching out there, Supervisor Sabatier is good, it's all good with him.
That's excellent reporting, thank you Rob for taking care of that and get someone there, yeah, they're very concerned, so glad he's okay, thank you.
Thank you Brian for taking care of that.
That concludes our agenda items for today, so we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting for 3:27 2020, thank you very much board, and community involved.